So moved.
Second.
I presume you're appointing the Mayor Waldak?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
That's what I thought I heard.
She's in the chair. Second.
Two seconds.
Aye.
Good evening and welcome to the July 18th Lake Forest City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Acting Mayor Waldak.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Newman is absent. Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Could we all please rise and give the hunch of attention. Hunch of allegiance.
(inaudible). (inaudible) States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is reports of city officers. First up is comments by Acting Mayor. I have only one. It is approval of the 2016-2017 Board and Commission's appointment for the Gorton Community Center for Richard Wood. So I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Next is comments by City Manager, Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Waldak and City Council members. Before I get to the published agenda, the one thing I did want to highlight, a couple of months ago, we had a presentation about property taxes and the assessed valuations that come out and so forth, and we just wanted to alert you all and those who are watching that the Shields Township assessments are out and that individuals who reside within the Shields Township who want to appeal their assessment have until August 15th to do so. And we will alert you as the other townships release their assessment periods in the city of Lake Forest. But Shields is out and so, and I think that represents the largest single township and geographic area in the city of Lake Forest, so I think there's a number of residents who are within that district. So we really encourage people to pull that out, take a look at it closely, because you'll have a very small window in which you can appeal, and then that window closes and you have no opportunity. So, on the agenda this evening, it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to present to the City Council the new Executive Director of the Lake Forest Library. She's been on the job now two months, so she knows that library like the back of her hand, but I would ask Catherine Lemer to come up, please, and introduce herself to both the council and the community and tell us what's on the horizon for Lake Forest Library. Catherine?
Thank you, Bob. Never spoken in front of a city council before, so give me a minute to gather my thoughts. But I've been on the job two months, as Bob said. I've had a great time. I've been at the Rotary Club. I've been all around the community. More people have my business card than will ever have them again in this amount of time. So I just thought I'd take just a couple quick minutes to tell you what's going on at the library and where we think we're headed. So, a couple of big programings, programs coming up in the fall. We're doing, again, a One Community, One Read. That's in partnership with Ragsdale Foundation, Lake Forest College, and the Friends of the Lake Forest Library. So lots of event planning around that. The website's on the bottom and all of the events can be registered for there. So we're moving as much as we can to the e-environment. The, click.
(inaudible).
Oh, okay, sorry. So we've done a large expansion of our e-collections over the last year, and you, if you've been on the library website, you can see we're really thinking strategically about partnering with some of the concerns the city has about serving local businesses and entrepreneurial individuals. I met Stephen, Stephen Whittington, a few weeks ago, who's working on the shared office space, and we'll probably go in and do some presentation for the people who are using that space. We've added a number of educational and other skills-type programs. We've added Lynda.com, so it's business courses, leadership courses, code classes. My husband has said to me, "No PhDs in computer science," so I'll probably be on here learning Python along with the rest of the world. And then we just have the standard thing for young people and Tutor.com and Muzzy and Rosetta Stone for people who just have interested in other kinds of skills. This has been a project that the Friends of the Lake Forest Library took on. We have digitized back to 1899, the Lake Forrester. We are getting a lot of press on this because reporters are using it. It's easier, it lives on the library website, so if you have an interest about what happened a long time ago in Lake Forest, it's very easy to access. We bring it on one year at a time now, as the copyright makes it available to us. Whoops, skipped one. So, basically, we're a very busy place. If you haven't seen us out at the Fresh Air Market on the weekends, we've got tons of programming going on with children and adults for the summer. We've moved some of that program to the evening. We've experimented with that for the first time so that families can attend. We've had, in some cases, over 100 attendees on the evening programs, so we're very excited about that. And then, you know, you can pick up free books from the library and the library friends at the beach cart and all the train stations and all of that, so please do that. And then just a quick reminder that the book sales coming up, September 15th to the 18th, that funds a significant amount of our programs. So I personally have signed up to drive a truck, which could be scary, but check our liability policy. And then I just end with Paula Poundstone, if anyone's a fan of this comedian. She recently said, "If you haven't been to your library lately, you're overdue." And I would really encourage you, it is not a shushing place. It's about collaboration. We are really reaching out to look at what the community wants, what the community needs, and we've had a number of brainstorming sessions on our, with various departments, and the feeling is really is nothing is off the table. So I do hope you'll come in and just say hi, and I will leave it with that and ask if you have any questions.
Any questions for Catherine?
No, but I endorse the book, the One Read book, which I, which I have read, and it's really pretty, pretty terrific book.
Good.
So looking forward to meeting the author.
Great. It's, I think, a really nice way that we're partnering with all those various organizations, and she's actually wrote the book as part of Ragdale, so.
Yeah, it's good.
It'll be a lot of fun.
Catherine, I have one question. Actually, it's a two-part question. I know you've only been on the job for two months, but what do you see as the greatest opportunity and what do you see as the greatest challenge for Lake Forest Library in the future?
I think that, and I'm not a fancy word person, I'm sort of a ditch digger person, so I would start out with our greatest challenge. Our greatest challenge is our space constraints. When we hold a program, we're pushing up against the boundaries because we only have really one program space. We've been approached by a number of individuals in the community to expand programming, but there's just nowhere to go with it in the building, which means it opens up our greatest opportunity as to start partnering in different ways with different individuals in the community, different organizations. So I think that, you know, there's an old saying that good libraries build collections, better libraries build services, and great libraries build communities, and I really think that that's this kind of library. And we're really, we're looking out to see where we can partner, what makes sense, so I would just say that.
That's a great quote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that completes my report this evening. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you very much. Well, we're going to move on now to comments by council members. The first item is a Finance Committee item. At this time, I would ask to open a public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance and ask if there's any public comment. All right, seeing none, I will then ask to close the public meeting. And I see Elizabeth stepping up. The next item is consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for FY 2017 and approval of rollovers. Elizabeth, are you going to present on this?
Very briefly. You've heard this. You granted first reading approval of the appropriation ordinance on July 5th. As you know, the City Council adopts a comprehensive fiscal plan at the beginning of the fiscal year. That sets forth the annual budget, includes five-year financial forecast, personnel policies, and other financial-related documents. The appropriations ordinance is simply the legal mechanism to authorize the expenditure of city funds in the current fiscal year. So we take the budget, we've provided you a crosswalk from the annual budget to the appropriation ordinance, so you know what's included and what's excluded. Happy to entertain any other questions, but we are recommending that the City Council grant final approval to the appropriations ordinance this evening.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion for approval of the final reading of the ordinance and rollovers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Seven yea, I'm sorry.
Zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Pity. Before I get to the next two items, which are the Public Works Committee items, I'm going to ask if there's any other comments by council members. I know Alderman Beidler has a comment. I didn't want to forget to get to her.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So I am, I'm not sure exactly what committee I'm representing. I think I'm representing Alderman Newman, who was, is he Chair of the Golf Advisory Committee? So the bottom line is that I have been working with him and members of city staff to, to help figure out what a campaign to renovate the Deer Path Golf Course would look like. And we're really kind of at the ground floor of figuring that out, but we're very excited. The fact is that the 90th birthday, the 90th anniversary of the Deer Path Golf Course comes in, in August. So we're going to do a kickoff, both a kickoff for the, we're calling it Play It Forward is the name of the, the campaign that we're going to have to renovate the golf course. It'll be a public-private partnership. Some of you have already heard, seen the plans for what needs to be done there. But rather than wait until everything is kind of fully formed, we're going to have a party on August 21st, Sunday, August 21st, at the golf course, 4:00 to 5:30, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what we have in mind. We have some things that we think we can get done this next year. We're going to add a piece of it, this was Alderman Newman's idea, to add a piece of it, which will really be to encourage people like me who don't golf to give it a try. So there's actually going to be a programmatic piece of this campaign, which is give golf a try. And it'll be, it'll be wonderful to have some people joining me out there. Either, either I will be doing it alone or we'll, we'll have some other folks too. So, and it's interesting to be doing a program piece right from the start with a, with a campaign. So again, you'll, this will be on the city's website, but Sunday, 4:00 to 5:30, Sunday, August 21st, 4:00 to 5:30, the 90th anniversary of our really highly valued-in-this-community public course, and I hope I'll see you there. So basically, I get to talk about a party. Come, please come.
Thank you, Prue. Any other council members have any comments this evening? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward to the two Public Works Committee items, which are on the agenda, so I will put on my Public Committee, Public Works Committee Chairman hat, and we're going to turn to the first item, which is approval of an agreement to provide a bridge condition report for the Ferry Hall Bridge. The Ferry Hall Bridge is located on Mayflower Road, as many of you probably know. It's on a particularly lovely stretch of Mayflower that is bordered by Rosemary to the south and Spring Lane to the north. The city is responsible for inspecting all bridges, and we contract with Black Engineering, and they provide us a report on a yearly basis. You have a copy in your packet of this year's report from Black, and I believe it starts at page 28. The frequency of the inspection of the various bridges is mandated or is set in accordance with national standards. And so this particular bridge, the Ferry Hall Bridge, is, I believe, evaluated by Black every two years. It was inspected in May of this year, and Black found extensive deterioration on the underside of the concrete deck slab on the bridge's east lane on the south approach. After that was discovered, and they reported it to us, we turned to Wissjanni Elsner, I hope I said that right. It's a name that's familiar with us, I think, associates. They are, for lack of a better term, the bridge experts, our bridge experts, and we have turned to them many times in the past. They came out, they confirmed Black's sightings, and they, in addition, told us that the load carrying capacity of the east lane, which is the lane where, where the deterioration is, is present, should really only be five, five tons. On the west lane, that can carry a load of up to 15 tons. So to put this in perspective a little bit, a vehicle over five tons would be many landscaping trucks, an ambulance, a moving truck, probably a lot of delivery vehicles. Those types of vehicles really should not be traveling on the east side of this bridge right now. And I know as I'm speaking, Mike Thomas is up here running through some pictures. All of those pictures were included in your packet, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any technical questions that I'm not capable of, so feel free to, to jump up and ask. So the Public Works Committee looked at this item last month, and we decided that the best thing to do is to shut down that, that east lane and use the west lane only. That west lane would be used for traffic that runs just in one direction, so either traffic just running north or traffic just running south. And so we really have two issues that we're seeking some input and, and ideas from City Council on tonight. The number one, the first one is a traffic issue. We did send out a letter to residents, I think there were approximately 33 residents, who are people on Mayflower and around Mayflower, those who are most likely to be traversing this bridge or this roadway in their cars. I will say also that this bridge and this road gets a lot of foot traffic, especially in the summer months. It's just a really lovely road and it's a common path to the beach. But we, we reached out to those people to try to see what their preference was, one-way north or one-way south. And Mike, I know you and I spoke this afternoon, and at that time, we had one response. I don't know if we've, we've heard more, so looking for just a little input on that. And then the second issue is a budgetary one. Obviously, this is a situation, this needs to be repaired. It's, it will be costly, and it's not something that can be done in a day or two. I think the timeframe that we're looking at is somewhere in the 18 months to two-year range, and that's, that's an estimate, but that gives you some idea. And so one of the things that we're asking to do tonight, obviously, this is not an item that was budgeted for. It's not something that we were, were aware that we would have to do. So we're asking to waive formal, the formal requirements, a request for proposal, and approve an agreement for Wissjanni to prepare a proposal. Basically, what we're asking is for them to evaluate the situation, give us a proposal, a report outlining our various options, and have that prepared by October. And the reason why October is, is an important date is if we can get it done by October, we can put it on our FY 18 capital improvement plan, if that's the right word, yes? So with that, I'll stop talking and see if anybody has any questions or any input on those two aspects.
I have one. If we wait until October, how long will the bridge, will half of the bridge be shut down?
Well, it's going to have to be shut down until, I believe, we, the, until it gets fixed, correct, Mike?
Correct. So in essence...
I mean, it doesn't seem to me that we're going to be able to do that work over the winter.
No, no, we will not.
You're into spring, early, wow.
Correct. So in essence, the request this evening is for Wissjanni to do a study, study further that entire bridge, come back and give us two or three solutions. We then will select one, get a budget estimate for that, put it in next year's capital budget, go out to bid, have the design completed. We'll probably be coming back to City Council, I'm guessing, mid-fall, mid to late fall, to request City Council approval to enter an agreement to design the selected option. That design is probably going to take at least six months to complete, so I'd envision us going out to bid for this project late spring, early summer at the earliest, but the goal is to get it completed by winter of '18.
Wow. If we, I mean, this is not my ward, but, but I mean, is there no way, I mean, that we could agree with it tonight, it could be expedited and be done by the middle of December?
I think that even, I, I think the answer to that is no.
No.
And I think that we are expediting it, frankly, by, by doing what we're doing, by, by asking what we're asking for right now, which is, you know, to waive the formal request for proposal and, and to have this firm, who we've worked with many times in the past and had very good experiences with us, go ahead and make this valuation, give us the report and lay out their options. The only other question is one of, again, one of traffic. It's going to inconvenience people, certainly, but we want people to be safe. And we discussed at Public Works Committee the option of posting signs and saying, you know, in effect, you know, "Don't go on this bridge, don't go on this side of this bridge if you're in a vehicle that weighs more than five tons." And, and we just weren't comfortable with that, to be honest with you. It would be very difficult to enforce, and, and we, as a committee, just, just, we weren't comfortable with it, so we, we felt that...
I certainly agree with that.
Yeah, we felt that this was the best way, and, you know, my personal opinion, for what it's worth, is I, I would, I think the, the west lane would normally travel south, unless I'm really confused, right? So the, you know, that's the, that's the, that's the direction that the traffic would normally be flowing in the westbound lane, so perhaps keep that lane going south, because that would be the direction that people would normally traverse. And, and if you're headed north, you would probably hop over to, to Rosemary or perhaps Sheridan. And, you know, we certainly want to get it, it's certainly, want to get it accomplished as quickly as possible, but there's a limit to how quickly these things can be done. Yes, ma'am?
Couple of questions. Is there no way to temporarily shore up the bridge so you don't have to restrict the load?
I don't, I don't believe there is. Doug Crampton is here from Wissjanni. It's more of the deck issue where the, the concrete superstructure underneath is actually separating from the steel. The salts and the chlorides that have accumulated over time are really separating both. But is there a way? I don't believe there is, but...
There may be a way, but underneath the bridge, it's, there's a, the ravine, so that there's steep slopes, and you'd have to put up post-hores all throughout that area underneath the bridge. So you're setting up post-hores, and you're probably installing concrete slabs to support those post-hores, so it'd be, it'd be a very expensive option.
Okay. So this was obviously a poured-in-place bridge last time we constructed it?
Yes, that's correct.
Would, today, would you use a precast concrete beam?
Either way, precast or, or poured-in-place. The issue was, is that this structure was built in the 70s, and when it was rehabbed in the 1990s, this section of slab was, was scarified. So they took off the top half of it and left the bottom half of the slab. So the bottom half of the slab that exists out there today is still from the 70s, and that's what, that's what we're getting all the salts and deterioration in.
Okay. Next question is, I've seen where they've had lane closures and they put up temporary, meaning six to 12-month, traffic signals, so that you can have traffic go in both directions. You just, you know, alternate, you take your turns. Is that an alternative?
We actually looked into that. I think Mike can speak to that a little bit.
Renting equipment costs us $3,000 a month purchasing it. We received three quotes. One was $27,000, another one was $30,000, the third one was $55,000. So it absolutely could be done, but again, that's a non-budgeted expense that we would have to cover.
But definitely an option, I mean, I'm glad you brought it up because it's an option worth considering, it's just the cost.
Bruce, while you're standing there, would you like to respond to the question, is there any way that this can be expedited? I know I'm probably asking the wrong person, but if you could, if we want to do this as quickly as possible, what would, what would our options be?
I think this is the option. We had talked about kicking around some state funding for it, and that's three- to five-year process, so if that's, if you're not going that route, I think this is the way to go. The, the study that we're doing would be studying the columns, the rest of the slab. There's still a retaining wall that's there from the 30s, so we'd take some concrete cores and determine the condition of the concrete of the structure that remains to make sure there's no other surprises. And then once that report's done in October, you know, we can do the, our quickest on the design, and if, if it's as simple as replacing what's there now with something in kind or very similar to it, then the design span could probably squeezed out a little bit, but this is about as, as tight as we can get it.
Back to the temporary traffic signal. If we did make the capital investment in it, chances are it's salvageable for future use if we ever need it to relocate it someplace else, because it's essentially temporary equipment, right?
Without question, yes. It's just equipment that we, we don't have, so yes.
Any other communities near us that we're friendly with that have it we could borrow from?
Larger communities may. I know we've gone in the past to Vernon Hills. They have a larger sign selection inventory than we do, but I don't believe, I can check with them. I don't believe they own something like this. There are two or three companies in Chicagoland that rent a lot of traffic safety control items, this being one of them. So majority of the time, municipalities, rather than investing, because typically the projects are only short-term, they'll rent the items. We did that for Wesley, Wesley Bridge Cleaning. All of that signage was rented. But this, it, it absolutely could be used in the future, without question.
If it's a pleasure of the council, we could certainly come back to you with a proposal as the next agenda.
One of the things I worry about, Mike, with the, with the renting, I, I think that the, the good news piece of this, and this is in fact not just my ward, but my neighborhood, I'm on this bridge at least once a day and sometimes more than that, as is my son and his family. So, so this is, this is, you know, this is, this isn't just something that's happening in Lake Forest. This is something that will, you know, that will impact our lives on a daily basis. I am so relieved that the city takes our infrastructure so seriously that this was discovered. I think that is an extremely important take-home for all of us. Sure, we will be inconvenienced, and we'll get used to it. I mean, there's a part of me that thinks, this is a very pastoral road. It's not, in fact, as pastoral a road as people often treat it. We, we get a lot of walkers on this road and, you know, multiple people walking abreast and multiple bikes walking abreast, and people sometimes drive a little fast. Presumably, this will, this will be a good traffic calmer in that sense, if there's just traffic in one direction. I'm, I'm actually thinking that once people get used to it, I mean, if you, if you take a road from Mayflower over, it's, you know, it's a quarter of a mile to get over to Sheridan Road. Nobody's, nobody's trip is going to be 20 minutes longer because of this, you know, we're all going to forget it a few times and realize we have to go, you know. It's a little bit complicated. We have to do a loop around the, the, you know, the, the road at the lake or something and come, but we'll, you know, we'll get used to it. And I, you know, and, and I'm certainly not unwilling to look at the, what the, the light thing would be, but in some ways, that might be more of a disruption to this particular kind of road in this particular neighborhood, unless we run into a problem, in which case we don't have a choice. I think this is, this, this is going to be a big number. If we're, we're not going to go normally with a bridge, you know, with a Lakewood Bridge, we're in a process with the state, normally we do this in a different way. We're going to be doing this ourselves. When we see that number, I think adding anything to it might be, might be something. I mean, this means, help me if I'm, if I'm misreading this, but I think what this means is, because this wasn't anticipated for the fiscal year '18 capital budget, there are some things we were expecting to do next year that will not be able to be done because we are having to do this absolutely critical infrastructure work. And so amazing that we are so sound that we will have that choice. I mean, I think there is a good news story here, and, and I think we'll adjust, you know. I think being able to keep one lane open is amazing. Closing that bridge entirely would be tough. And my fear, just to pick up on what, I'm sorry, Jack, just to pick up on what you're saying, Prue, with, with the lights, they make a lot of sense, but I do think that it would really sort of disrupt the, the ambiance, for lack of a better term, of that area. And I think we might get complaints. I think people might be more upset over the presence of lights on this particular stretch of this particular street than the inconvenience of having to go one way.
of this particular street than the inconvenience of having to go one way, but...
I may be part of the guilty party here, but I think we're overthinking this thing, and I think we ought to move forward. It sounds like a good proposal.
Well, before we do that, I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public who would like to comment on this item. All right, seeing none?
I just have one more comment before you call for a vote or question, excuse me. So our engineering study will look at the entire structure and retaining wall, not just part of it, we'll look at the whole thing.
Correct. The last thing we want to do is have to come back to you two years from now and say there's another part of the bridge that we need to, we need to address. One thing, if I could just highlight, our Director of Finance had the idea, it was a wonderful idea, of using MFT funds. Motor fuel tax, next year FY 18, the overlay, the resurfacing program is funded by MFT. We're going to have the IMS study presented to council in the fall. We assume that that pavement study is going to come out better than it has in the past, which is going to provide the opportunity to take MFT funds and use it for the bridge repair, and then whatever we have remaining, we could use on overlay. So, my idea that Elizabeth had thrown out, and it actually is great timing, so...
Very much so.
Hopefully, there will be excess.